A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of Sunnybrook School District 171 is to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative, innovative instructional practices, and a collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Role call. Mr. Terrell.
Present.
Ms. Ambrose.
Present.
Ms. LaShure.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on the agenda should do so when that item is up for discussion. Visitor statements will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor comments. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until the visitor's statement is at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues, personnel, I'm sorry, personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Item, Agenda Item F, 2024-2025 Proposed Budget. Mr. Schrader.
Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you so, so much for coming here tonight out of your busy schedule, especially to be here early. I'm gonna shut these lights down a little bit more, so we'll see. Okay, so, um, this, today is our annual school budget presentation. So, not much different from the tentative budget you received back in August. Um, so here we go. Uh, first of all, this is the kickback of what we're doing. This is the Back to School 2024. Um, we're back in school, we're back in session, which is really what the budget is for. And, uh, what you see is, um, our house sorting party at Heritage Middle School. Uh, where the kids were, uh, our new fifth graders were, um, brought into one of the four houses. Uh, just some great things going on to kick off the new, new year. You can just feel the enthusiasm even through the picture. And then here's, you know, some of, what is this budget for? What are we doing? Well, this is for school, of course, and here's an example, uh, Heritage Middle School. We have our students, uh, engaging in some STEAM Lego projects, uh, in a collaborative effort. Um, in addition to academics, we have extracurriculars such as sports, um, that's going on. So here's our Heritage volleyball team. I look at this picture and it makes me a little bit sad because, uh, those students have moved on now to high school, um, but just what a great season they had. In addition to athletics, we also have extracurricular activities, uh, for the kids. For example, this were, was an example of our student leaders going to Iron Oaks, uh, learning leadership skills. And Nathan Hale with their Sign Language program. And then, of course, on top of everything else going on within the school, we also have community events. Uh, in this case, Nathan Hale, our Black History Month program, and just our kids are just dressed just so sharp, just look great. So we've got a lot of activities going on, um, at both schools. And then on top of all of that, we also have capital projects. So as you see there to the picture on the left, the Nathan Hale over this last summer, all brand-new lights and brand-new ceiling. Uh, looks really, uh, the facilities look really, really nice. Um, and then you have the front entrance there, Nathan Hale finally in his completion at this time last year, it was still being worked on. And so you have just kind of an updated picture there. So, now that we kind of get to the less enjoyable part of this presentation, and that, um, so here's our budget levy cycle. So in August, everyone receives the tentative budget. Like I said, this, today's budget is, isn't much different than really than what you had before. Um, and so tonight, we're approving the budget and adopting the budget, and then next month, we'll have a tentative levy. And then November, we'll approve the actual, um, levy. So let me draw your attention first, um, this page, and, and this is a packet that's on your desk in front of you, um, so... I put in here the, the last, uh, six years of, of history here, and, uh, and then this year's budgeted. But I'm gonna highlight the last year and this year. So last year, uh, we finished up one thousand dollars in the deficit, which means, uh, you know, we had one thousand dollars more in expenditures than, uh, revenue. Um, and then that was partially offset, we actually finished, uh, ninety-six thousand dollars to the positive. Um, that was because we received ninety-seven thousand dollars in bond proceeds at the end of June, um, for the bond, bonds that were, um, settled in July. Um, so, but because they hit in June, they hit on our previous year's statements. So we actually finished up, uh, ninety-six thousand dollars positive last year budget-wise. Uh, and then what you see on this last column to you right here is, um, our beginning fund balance, where it should be at fourteen-two-oh-five. And then budgeted revenues for this year are nineteen million. And minus our expenditures of a little over twenty-two million. Again, these were on the tentative budget sheets that we had in August. And so our results of operations is really negative two-point-four million, which looks really bad, right? But, um, when you consider that this summer alone, we had two million dollars in budgeted projects, capital improvement projects. That's really the big chunk of what, why we have a negative deficit. Which is, leads us to this last line here, not, second to last line, the bond proceeds. Um, we knew we were having, uh, capital projects, uh, last summer and, and finishing up now. And then we knew we have some, uh, upcoming bond capital projects. And so we did the five-million-dollar bonds, and the rest of those proceeds came in July. Uh, with those numbers, then we project that our estimated fund balance at the end of this year will be a little over sixteen-point-six million. Um, and that will help us to get through these next round of capital projects, uh, in, in infrastructure. So that's kind of where we are. And then, um, you know, the question, uh, you have the documents for, in August, uh, for how we finished up last year. Um, so I have the expenditures, just a quick summary. Um, two slides, this one goes by fund. As you know, we have, um, the education fund, the operations building and maintenance fund, debt service, um, transportation, the IMRF, and, um, social security, and then capital projects. TORT, which is insurance, and life safety, which is all our life safety software and fire alarms and things of that nature. And so, um, you see to the far-right columns what we have budgeted, and then our actual numbers are right there in the middle. And, and as you can see, we finished up, our expenditures were actually four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars less than what was projected. Um, we had some areas, of course, that were a little bit more than we expected and others that were less. But by and large, we finished almost exactly what we thought we would. Same information sorted differently. Uh, this is expenditures by object. And, uh, as you can put it in the fund, the salaries, we have salaries in operations building maintenance fund, and transportation fund, and the education fund. So this slide kind of breaks out, um, the various parts of our budget. Salaries, as you can see, um, was almost spot-on to what we had projected budget-wise. Uh, we just finished up contract negotiations last year, so there was a little bit of a wild card. Um, we have benefits, benefits is everything from social security to, um, health insurance. Um, and then purchase services, supplies, capital projects, and student tuition, um, to Echo and some other various schools where we send our students to. And so you see the breakdown there, and again, you know, for the most part, uh, we were really, um, really close to our budget numbers. Any questions up to this point? All right. So, uh, we go then, uh, so, okay, we looked at last year, and all right, so looking forward, well, where are we going? So, we have our budgeted numbers for fiscal year 2025. These numbers that you see highlighted to you right, um, are really just a compilation of historical, um, expenses. Um, what I project, some are estimates, some are, I have more clear knowledge, and it's just kind of folding all that information to make the best possible projection that we can. One thing I want to note, uh, in this presentation is just, we, we are, we do budget conservatively in terms of almost worst-case scenario for expenses. And then kind of a very conservative estimate on revenues. Um, I would much rather have, let's say, on revenues, uh, you budget for eight dollars, and if you get ten dollars, that's fantastic, rather than budget for ten and you only get eight. So we do things conservatively here, so, you know, hopefully our, our budgeted numbers, we don't reach that amount. Um, but there are our budgeted numbers for FY25. Again, very, very similar to what you saw in the tentative budget back in August. The big wild cards in present, in this kind of slide is, uh, like the capital projects, uh, when they start, when they finish, how much they get completed. And, um, so that one's just kind of a wild card. And then grants, uh, grants are always another one that's really tough to, to, um, determine whether or not you get it in June or versus when you get it in July, and so these are just processes. But as you can see, just a slight increase from what we had previously. Uh, similar, like we looked at earlier, just the breakdown of salaries and benefits, just expenditures budgeted, just looking at it differently. And again, on, on Friday, um, everybody had the state budget report, um, that came through with these same numbers. But this is a, I think this is a more of a Reader's Digest type of presentation to kind of pull it all together and make it more clear. So then we're gonna skip over to revenues, and how did we do? Um, this part was good news, bad news. Um, we really ended up with almost two million more than we had budgeted for, um, for several reasons. Number one, uh, we always budget conservatively for property taxes, um, local, uh, we had some, uh, CPRT, uh, money that was a little bit more than we had anticipated, um, and some interest, uh, that was higher than we had anticipated, uh, just some various things like that. Um, EBF was right on, on point. State categoricals, we had a couple of grants that were not budgeted for last year that were, uh, new that we, um, Dr. Erica, uh, had applied for and was able to secure the benefits and grants for us. So, um, we received some additional state money that was not budgeted for. Again, just, you know, it's a good thing. Um, federal grants, uh, we've received a little bit more money than we budgeted. Again, that's more for timing differences. We knew we were gonna get it, but not necessarily when. And then other federal programs, uh, was almost, uh, to the, to the, to the dollar. And then bond proceeds, we received some bond proceeds in June, I mentioned earlier, that we weren't, uh, we did not budget for because we did not know what that would be at that time. So, um, positive, um, positive notes on revenues, um, compared from budgeted to actual. And then, um, so I take that, uh, actual revenue, and so, okay, how do we do our budget? And so, as you can see, the, uh, highlighted column are very kind of what we anticipate, what we're going to get. The federal grants amount is way down. Um, Dr. Lorio and Strauss would, would agree to me, we're not going to see some S R two and S R three dollars this year as like we did last year, uh, which is a big part of why the federal grant money is going down. And then, um, but everything, and then, of course, now, we receive a lot more, uh, being that last line is the bond proceeds that we received all. The, the, the four, four-point-nine million dollars came in July, um, which is why we're at twenty-four-point-seven. Um, so the far-right column is just percent of the budget, just, you know, it's just typical, uh, what you see is, you know, a, about a third. It really, under normal circumstances, forty percent is property taxes, forty percent state. Um, and then, um, you know, we, ten percent is really usually what our federal programs come to, um, but things have just been kind of in flux lately. Fund balances, okay, so what do we have? Um, so what you see here is the, um, funds that we talked about earlier, and our fund balances for July 1, 2024. This is what we're starting with. I'm gonna go to the bottom row, and you see our total fund balance is fourteen-point-two million. And, uh, based on the numbers we looked at earlier, the revenues, um, and the... Uh, that should, that third column should say FY24 expenditures, um, not surplus deficit, that should say expenditures. When you take that all into consideration, that, so the expenditures are twenty-two million, two-ninety-four. Um, at the end of the year, we should project a balance of sixteen-six-seventy-five, um, which is what your far-right column is. You have two numbers in red right there. So we received bond proceeds in July from our bonds. They went into our working cash fund, but that's not what they're for, they're for capital projects. So your first motion in the next regular scheduled board meeting is you're going to vote on to approve the transfer of the working cash bonds first into Fund Twenty, and then from Fund Twenty to Fund Sixty. That's just the way the state requires you to do it. So that five million, three, uh, five million and three thousand dollars, um, those are just kind of, those are transfers, uh, from one fund to another. Any questions? You guys are great. All right, I'm, I'm gonna continue to move on. So, all right, so how we doing? Uh, Dave, what's going on here? How have we been? So, um, we get the financial profile score every year from the state based on last num, last fiscal year's numbers. They are unaudited, but, um, I'm pretty confident those are pretty good numbers. Um, we have a financial profile score of three-point-six-five, which puts us in the highest category of financial recognition. Um, that top row, um, in my stay here at Sunnybrook, we've never had anything less than four. The reason that's a three now, that's a fund balance to revenue ratio. Um, our fund balances went down a little bit last year because if you remember, we transferred money from the education fund and working cash fund. We transferred it to cover many of the capital projects that we've been working on to keep that fund, uh, in the positive. So if we moved some money around, and as a result, uh, we were three percent, hit just a little bit more, we would have been okay and gotten a four on that row as well. But nonetheless, we are still in financial recognition. So here's just kind of a summary. Uh, we started off with, uh, this year fiscal, uh, fund balance of fourteen-point-two. The revenues we discussed, expenditures we discussed, and, um, and keep in mind, the revenues include the bond proceeds. Had we not done the bond proceeds, um, and, and this budget surplus two-point-four, leaving us at a balance of sixteen-six, if we had not done the bond proceeds, you know, take away five million from that, and that would have put us under twelve. And, um, you know, that's, that's, you know, considering your, you know, the budget of the big school district and, and these things right here at the bottom, we have major budget assumptions, um, that, you know, basically for the most part, real estate taxes and, and those kinds of things, they're gonna remain flat. Um, you know, there are some concerns state-budget-wise, they've done a great job of funding, um, public schools, and we hope that continues. Um, but you always want to have a rainy day cash fund just to make sure, uh, in the event that things, uh, uh, go differently. Um, and just a reminder, we do have the bond issuance. Um, and then expenses and stuff, we're just, we have older buildings, and as you can look around and what you saw in the pictures, every year, we're updating them and, and keeping them modernized and getting them up to where they should be. Um, and hopefully that's been a wise use of taxpayer money. And last thing in red there is just a reminder, Sunnybrook School District 171, as most school districts in the area, we are cash basis, which means that if you receive a deposit on June thirtieth, it'll be this year. If you receive a deposit on July one, it goes in the next fiscal year, so, uh, June thirtieth is our cutoff. And so sometimes, um, these, these numbers year-to-year change based on the timing. We are getting close to the end. Is that, okay, as a school board member, uh, it's quite the task, where you've got a, you know, a twenty-million-dollar-plus budget you're looking at. And, uh, so how do we know, um, you know, that what we're looking at, the numbers before you, that they're good numbers, they're solid numbers? And who's responsible? Are we being good, um, caretakers of this money? And so some of the safeguards for a school, for school finance are that, A, school boards, you guys get all employee contracts. So, you know, we don't hire anybody without your approval, uh, who they are and their benefits from the, the, from the contract that we negotiated to hourly, to salary thing, so you guys have all of that, uh, requires your approval. Anytime we require service or vendor contracts, you guys, uh, requires your approval. And then any expenditure over ten thousand dollars is, uh, on your, you know, whether it's furniture or a, a new, uh, transformer or whatever it may be, um, we do ask for your permission before anything like that starts. Um, so those are a lot of, um, good safeguards. And then finally, um, at the end of the day, you know, we have the state, we have our auditors, our Baker Philly. Um, they're, you know, constantly making sure that we are recording things and properly. Um, we have our life safety visits to make sure that our buildings are safe and updated. Um, we have state and federal. Again, Dr. Los, uh, can attest, they, uh, they, they break us over the coals for these grants to make sure that we're spending them, A, as if we're allowed to, and that we're compliant with everything, not reporting-wise and how we're spending it. And it is quite the, uh, time-consuming task, but, um, I think if you, and I know if you've seen our recent, uh, reports and things like that, that we have been compliant with all of that. So, that then kind of, this story had a beginning a few minutes ago. Um, we're heading towards the, the, the final stretch here, and we started with the beginning, and just like this budget presentation, but we started the school year, and we have our younglings with, uh, kindergarten, and our steam room at Nathan Hale. As you can see, we've got the turds, and they're just rolling up to sleep. This is this year's picture, excited to learn. And again, this is a little bit of sadness for me because just our kids graduating, uh, moving on to high school. We're, we're so proud of them and excited for them. Um, and so this is a journey. And so, um, we get to appreciation for the school board, for the community members, the businesses, and all the stakeholders who are helping Sunnybrook's, uh, School District 171 help our students grow from, from younglings and kindergarten to graduate to eighth grade so they can be college and career-ready. And, uh, thank you for your time on this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Item G, recommended motion to approve of adoption of a proposed budget resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShure.
Ambrose.
Yes, by Ambrose. LaShure.
Second by LaShure.
Oh, motion by, oh, my goodness, motion by Ambrose, second by LaShure. Ms. Ambrose.
Yes.
Ms. LaShure.
Yes.
Mr. Terrell.
Yes.
Ms. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson, yes. All right. Motion went through. Do we have any visitor statements? Okay, budget meeting adjourned at six-thirty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Going to the lower men.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of Sunnybrook School District 171 is to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative instructional practices, and a collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Role call.
Ms. LaShure. Here.
Ms. Ambrose.
Present.
Mr. Terrell.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Lisa, so we have, uh, the fifth board member, fourth board, sixth board member, she's calling in. So let me let her know that we can't hear her. Lisa. Lisa, you got too much noise in the background, so you just gonna have to listen, and, uh, we'll let you vote.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Ms. Seehill. Here. Ms. Davis.
Davis, you just got called.
Mr. Terrell.
Present.
Okay. And Ms. Thompson here, I think I'm at the, maybe move her to the phone, something to hear her, obviously to hear me, if we do this. If you don't mind, please.
Is your mic on?
Oh, is it? No, 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 sorry, sorry guys.
We getting it together. Okay. Who did the role call? Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on the agenda should do so when that item is up for discussion. Visitor statement will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor's comments. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until the visitor's statement at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Item F, recommended motion to approve the regular board of education meeting minutes of August twelve, twenty-twenty-four. September expenses and August payroll in the amount of one million, ninety thousand, three hundred, ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Ambrose, second by Mr. Terrell. Terrell. Ms. Ambrose, yes. Mr. Terrell.
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Ms. Thompson, yes. Ms. Hill, yes. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Okay, got that. Communications. Okay, no communications from no one. Information on items. No? Board report.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, administrative reports. Dr. Milhouse passed, superintendent.
Okay, Dr. Los, this is our time, okay?
Thank you.
The dental buses here, we've been doing the dental bus now for, uh, ten years, and they're back again. So they will be in our buildings all week long to provide dental service to our students, and then they will be returning for the sixth month follow-up in April, so I'm always excited about that. October first, and Dr. Los is gonna talk a little bit more in detail about it. But October first, we're having a parent university. So we are encouraging our, um, Nathan Hale and our fifth grader, fifth-grade families from Sunnybrook or Heritage to come out. I'm sorry, I'm not stealing your thunder, but we'll talk about it a little bit more. Last year, we started talking about standard-based grading. Um, the staff at Nathan Hale, their, their administrative leadership, and Dr. Los are, are very passionate about it. So we met with our families, our community, last school year to talk about it. And we kind of stopped there because they had some questions, and we just kind of felt like we needed to give them a little bit more detail. We needed them to speak to someone from a school district who was, was in it, who had done it. Because they had questions that we could speculate, but I thought, we thought it would be in the best interest of our community if we had someone who will come out to speak about it a little bit more fluently. And so we have put that in, in the works, and we will be doing that on October the first, more details are to come. But again, we are looking to transition to standard-based grading for students in kindergarten and fifth grade. We will be adding a link to our website to give families, uh, more explicit details about what is standard-based grading. Because what I know for certain is that we can talk about it all the time or all day long, some people just prefer to read it. And so we will be doing that and adding, um, adding to it constantly so parents would know what we are doing and how we are moving from a standard report card to standard-based grading, and what the research says, and how do we feel it could help make our students go from even good to great. Um, I have to do my, my favorite time of the year is October fifteenth. Not so favorite for my families, it's exclusion day. I'm just asking if your babes, or if your students have physicals, please turn them in. Uh, we are sending out reminders, we are doing daily calls, and it's not the most pleasant of situations. I, I, I say it's my favorite time of year, but I say that jokingly, because it's not very pleasant to tell a student they can't go to school or they can't come to class. It's not very pleasant to have to call parents and be greeted by their bondo enjoying their warm, smiling faces on the other end of that phone. I just need you to understand that October fifteenth is exclusion day. Please, a lot of our families do have physicals, um, and whatever reason, turn them in at the last minute, but please get them turned in. That, and, uh, last time I saw you, we were getting ready to do the back-to-school peddler, and I'll let Ms. Green speak about that. However, our first day of school went out for with great success. We had seven minstrels come in, because one thing's about Sunnybrook is that we do care about the academic achievement of our students, but we also care about the mental, the social... but we also care about the mental, the social and the mental growth of our educators. Because if our teachers are not here, our students cannot grow and they cannot prosper academically. So we adopted the seven mindset probably a year ago. It's been a book read for our district. We found it to be highly successful last year. Our staff really enjoyed the speaker out of Texas, so we brought that speaker back. And she was able to, in her little country, little twang, she was able to invigorate us all. Just give us all some positive motivation to keep us all sound and keep us on the one core. Thank you.
All right, ma'am. Dr. Lori Owen-Strang.
Good evening. So I'm not gonna repeat about the standard-based grading factor, Pettis did a wonderful job of it. But just to reiterate, we will be having our first parent university at Nathan Hale on October 1st from 5:30 to 6:30. But we are thrilled to invite you to our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration at Nathan Hale on Thursday, this Thursday, September 19th, 2024. From 4:30 to 6:30, it will be a vibrant event filled with exciting games, activities, memorable performances by students and parents. You will also have a chance to enjoy delicious foods, which will be available for purchase throughout the event. This is a wonderful opportunity to come together as a community and honor the rich heritage and culture that makes us so unique. So I hope to see you there. Thank you.
So we are doing a taco truck. And what the proceeds are going to, we're doing a fundraiser. Our EOL department, we do a lot of things with our families. Last year, they went to the movies and things of that nature, so we try to do a lot with them. So for this upcoming Hispanic Heritage Celebration, we're having a taco truck and parents to buy tacos or other things of that nature. And the proceeds will come back to us so we can continue doing family field trips.
Okay. Mr. Schrader? Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Ms. Green?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just want to share with you what a tremendous time that back-to-school event was. We had over three hundred families and we gave over, we passed out over five hundred kits for back-to-school. So the kids reported they really enjoyed it. I just wanted to share that we did open our new pre-K program. We've got our next screening this Friday. Things seem to be going smooth. We're gonna be working closely with the state this year to make sure that we're following all their guidelines, but we're very excited about that program. Okay? Thank you.
Now, how old do you have to be for pre-K program?
Oh, you have to be three years old. So it's for three, four, and five-year-olds, and you have to participate in a screening. And it's an at-risk program, and we have to bring in our highest priority students. We're really excited about it.
Thank you.
So we are, we're very excited about the pre-K, and I'll just keep adding numbers, so. But that's just what I do. It's been, in our district, we had the pre-K program about twelve years ago, and we just continued it. So it's been, it's been a long, long time. So our pre-K program is back, it's forever-growing and ever-evolving, but we're really excited about it. So what we do is it's an AM and a PM session. So you have, we do our three, three early four-year-olds in the AM, and our four and five-year-olds in the PM. So it's every single day, Monday through Friday. You just have to sign up for a screening, and we'll welcome you.
All right. All right. Dr. McGowan?
Uh, no report this time.
No report. Mrs. Cambridge, Heritage Middle School principal.
Good day, good people. Happy September 16th, 2024. I'm so super excited that we are in school and we are moving and going because I can see the end, I can see the light in the windows. All right, let me tell you why. The clubs have started, the games have started, and all of the themes are happening already. So, our SCL curriculum, we're doing seven mindset, so remembering that everything is possible. So that is the, that is the theme and the mantra for the month of the students at Heritage. We're making sure that they remember that. Everything is possible. Clubs are in full effect. Make sure parents are looking at Parent Square because every Sunday, we're sending out a reminder of all the things that's already happening. RITMO is already in. Leading ladies, we're starting learning ladies, Hispanic heroes. Our beginner band, beginning band has started, jazz band has started. Cross-country, I wasn't finished, Dr. Pettis? Cross-country has started, soccer has started. So that's what I'm saying, we in full effect. I can see how it all comes together. We'll be having our first house day. That's happening this Wednesday, so we're pausing curriculum so that our students can collaborate and work together and do some team-building activities for the day. We're having our first house party. That's my favorite. Former student is coming back to be our DJ. I think it's important that we remember and bring back our former students, growing within, all those things. And so, I'm super excited about that. He's coming back to be our DJ. This is his second time being the DJ. I want to also give another shout-out to a former student, J.B. Smith, who makes the CD, not CDs, because I'm old. The flash drives for the music that we play in the hallway throughout, during our passing periods, during transition periods. We play music, and one of our former students makes those flash drives for us, so another quick shout-out. Picture day is coming up, the 24th. Just asking that our students dress up. Dressing up is relative. No hoodies, jeans, ripped clothes, all of the things. Just try to make sure that you dress up. And our first home basketball game is this Thursday, right before Hispanic Heritage Night at Heritage versus McKinley. Go Nationals. Have a super fantastic day.
Thank you.
Mr. Kent, principal at Nathan Hale.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Gonna be up here just for a minute, but I have to start by telling you how great my administrative team is from Ms. Cambridge, and I got a call off from Dr. Los, from Mr. Schrader, to, yes, even Dr. McGowan, to Ms. Green, all the way on up to our superintendent. Let me tell you, the support has been absolutely wonderful. And because the support has been wonderful, I'll tell you what, our school is in good shape. But more than that, our kids and our teachers are in good shape. So thank you so much for that. The other piece is tomorrow, we have open house. Last Tuesday was open house for the third and fourth graders. Our parents are absolutely great. They showed up, they came away with information aplenty. As you talk to them, that's what's important to me, did we give you enough information? And they did. But tomorrow, tomorrow, for early childhood, for first grade, for secondary, and for kindergarten, is our open house. 5:30 to 7 o'clock. So please, our parents are great, take the opportunity and come in and see what your child has been exposed to for the first eighteen so days of school. It is that new. So again, we are pretty happy with what we have. Ms. Cambridge and Dr. Pettis already mentioned the seven mindset. I think we're moving down the road with that because it can't just be a one-school thing or a this-school thing. It has to be a district thing. So that's what we're focusing on. At the last staff meeting, third grade presented the first chapter, and the second chapter will be presented, everything possible, by the fourth-grade team. So again, everybody has to get their fingers in the dirt. Everybody has to come away spending a little energy because everybody is needed to do what we need to do, and that is to make our school great. And then finally, I wanted to also mention the, without getting stuck on it, I couldn't help but smile when I heard superintendent talk about standard-based grading. I wasn't even looking at Dr. Los, but I knew she was smiling because we're on the same mindset. It's coming around, and it is going to be not only fun, but it is going to be exciting for our kids and for our parents too when we get down to the end of it. We can tell you where the deficit is, what the work is that needs to be done, what is the support that needs to happen. So I am waiting for that parent university. We are off to a great start. Happy.
So the policy committee, we met last Tuesday. So what's listed is a list of the policies that we went over, which you can find on the website. And there's a printout at the table. So we're gonna skip that part. And go straight to the motions. So item K, recommended motion to approve the resolution abating the district's working cash fund as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ambrose, second by LaShure. Ambrose?
Yes.
LaShure, yes. Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Velos?
Yes.
Item two, recommended motion to accept a donation from Prairie State Roadrunners for back-to-school supplies for Heritage Middle School and Nathan Hale School and a financial donation in the amount of $1,211 as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ambrose, second by Ms. Hill. Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Hill? Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure?
Yes.
Ms. Velos?
Yes.
Okay. Item three, recommended motion to accept the resignation with regret of Ms. Anes?
Anaselli.
Anaselli Best Quest, food service worker at Nathan Hale School, effective immediately, September 6, 2024, as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Mr. Terrell. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Velos?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Item four, recommended motion to approve the employment of Ms. Denise?
Zorick.
Zorick, peer professional, salary of $20.50 per hour, effective September 17, 2024. Pending successful background check results as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ambrose, second by Hill. Ambrose?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Velos?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Item five, recommended motion to approve the employment of Ms. Kyle Wilson, peer professional at Nathan Hale School, effective September 17, 2024. Pending successful background check results as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Terrell, second by Mrs. Ambrose. Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Ms. Velos?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Item six, recommended motion to approve the employment of Ms. Cabina as Cabado, part-time cleaner at Heritage Middle School, salary of $18.50 per hour, effective September 17, pending successful background check.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Mr. Terrell. Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Velos?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Okay, motion carried. Item seven, recommended motion to approve the promotion of Ms. Angela Cuevas Montamira to assistant principal at Nathan Hale, salary of $75,000, effective September 17, as presented.
Motion.
You know we have to pass it.
So motion by Ambrose, second by Hill. Ambrose, yes. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes.
Heritage family, yes.
I have not had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Cuevas. Miss Cuevas, stand in the way. That is Ms. Cuevas, that is our own, that is one of our Heritage Middle Schools. Phenomenal teacher, so it's a great boss that we are, we just look to see her take her career to a whole new level and just see her excel. She's had the opportunity over the last couple of years to be our summer school principal, and she's done a phenomenal job. And it's kind of funny because she came highly recommended by her peers. They really gave her the opportunity to move forward. They did a full-fledged campaign for her as well as her principal, so congratulations.
There's nothing like promoting our own.
That's right.
Carry that, yeah. Okay. Item eight, recommended motion to approve the regular meeting of Echo Executive Board of Directors, June 11, 2024 minutes. Special meeting on July 23rd, administrative contracts for Echo. Tracy Abanfe, William Holder, Lori Stalak, independent contractors agreement. My Base Pay, USA, Sunbelt, Winston Hall, psychologists as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Thompson. Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Recommended motion to approve the employment of Stephanie Ramirez, food service worker at Nathan Hale, salary of $20.50 per hour, effective September 17, pending successful background check.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ambrose, second by Thompson. Ambrose?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes.
Our lovely Stephanie is a former Heritage Middle School student.
Item 10, recommended motion to approve the submission of school maintenance grant application to ISBE in the amount of $50,000 for summer 2025. Heritage restroom and nurse office expansion as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Mr. Terrell. Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. LaShure, yes. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, motions, all motions carried. Item L, any visitor's statements? No. Item L, recommended motion, oh, we're not, we don't have any reason to go to closed session, so. Meeting adjourned at 6:59. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 6:59.